Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the December 8th, 2025 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeChau.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Casali.
Here.
Mr. Repone is out this evening. Mr. Larray.
Here.
Chairman Moffett is absent. In his place is Acting Chairman Turner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item is the approval of tonight's agenda. I don't hear any changes, so motion is in order.
So move.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from the November 24th meeting.
So move.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Tonight we have three site plans. First one is Site Plan Number 25-23, Jeff Bediant, PJ Industrial LLC, 47861 Ryan Road, and a vacant parcel located south of Hamlin Road on the west side of Ryan. Four multi-tenant industrial buildings. The applicant is here. Come on up. Let us know what your plan is for this piece of property.
If you'd like to start, if you have any questions for me, just let me know.
Hold on one second. Camera guy came out.
This guy could have the cameras.
Where to?
Back where it was.
Okay, sir. Name and address for the record.
Jeff Bediant, 1803 Treysky, Rochester Hills.
Okay. Yeah, make sure you sign in after, but go ahead and let us know what your plan is for the property that you have this evening.
We purchased the property on Ryan Road. We just like to put up four multi-tenant rental buildings. We don't know the size or amount of renters. It all depends on the need by the tenants.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to start with one or two buildings, go on to the third and fourth after that. Pretty much open to any questions, but it's pretty basic.
So you're going to phase it in, right? Start with two and then through.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just have a question, and I'll just throw it out there to start. On the, I'm looking at your drawing. On the north side, got a piece of property that's north of where you're going to put those four buildings. If you look at the plan, it says future development, and then it says outdoor storage for tenants. I guess a couple things. How is, what kind of outdoor storage? How will it be situated on the site? And then what is your future development plan for that parcel?
So same kind of development eventually. For now, we're going to do outside storage for the tenants because we find the need for that, for whether it be contractors, landscapers, like the building to the south, pretty much anybody that fills the ordinance.
Okay.
It's going to be based on the tenant and the need.
Okay. I think we'll probably address that a little later on here, too. So anybody else have any questions right now for the applicant? Right. Julie, you did this plan. Why don't you go ahead with your review?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So as Mr. Bediant indicated, they're planning on constructing four industrial-sized buildings on the property, which is fantastic. The facade elevations meet all the ordinance requirements, including the parking spaces. The one issue that the Planning Commission must address is the allotment of fabric instead of slats for screening on the fence that they're proposing. And then also, I had a concern about the property to the north. While accessory outdoor storage is permitted in the light manufacturing district, it must be approved by the Planning Commission, and there was very little detail on that portion of the site. Also, there was an access road that's proposed to the north of that. It was not constructed to the fire department requirements. So for the use of that site at this time, either we'll need to block it at the entrance or maybe postpone, if they plan on using that site currently, postpone this item until we have a better idea of how that northern property will be used and accessed. Because even with the accessory outdoor storage, they will need to provide screening, some sort of landscaping, fencing, and probably an orientation of what areas will be used for outdoor storage, and a circulation pattern as well would need to be identified.
What do you mean by circulation? We have a fire access road with the radius for the fire trucks.
Right, but the property, but if you will, what type of equipment maybe would be stored back there and how it will be orientated? Because if the fire department needs to access that site in case of an emergency, they will need some sort of aisleways that they would be able to drive through there.
We won't know what tenants need is the problem. So you're saying we'd have to come back and apply again, but that will hinder us from renting these units, I believe? Because there's a big need for outside storage, as everybody knows. That's why you guys have ordinances kind of against it without the buildings. So we would just like to be able to say, yes, we have outside storage for buildings. I mean, would it be something that we could say, Building A gets this area, Building B gets this area?
Well, in that--
I guess what makes this easier so that we can have a developed site plan to propose to any tenant? Because we don't have, this isn't a build-to-suit. This is a build and then rent.
Right. So I mean, I think if you can identify it with your engineers on how you're going to lay that out, that would be our biggest concern on how you're going to lay that out. I mean, obviously, like I said, we can consider this as an accessory outdoor storage, but it still needs to meet the zoning ordinance requirements for accessory use. That needs to be approved by the Planning Commission.
I think, I mean, like installing hydrants or, I guess, I don't know, not familiar with--
Well, and that would be up to the fire department. We don't know that because we didn't receive full site plans on that proposal for that parcel. So if we get more information, we can vet that out with the fire department--
Fire is the biggest issue we're concerned with.
Well, fire and access, because if they have to access the site, there has to be either stone that would be approved by the fire department because obviously the capacity, you know, they wouldn't be able to drive in there with a fire truck or any type of emergency vehicles in case of an emergency. It would need to hold the emergency equipment.
We do have the stone on the plans. We have the stone for the turnaround and the stone for the parking and storage. It's on the, it's called out on the north parcel and on the profiles.
Mm-hmm.
So I believe that--
But it was, it didn't include the entire parcel. That's my concern, is it only showed a portion of the parcel, maybe about half of the parcel on the site plan. It did not show the rest of the plans for, did not show the entire parcel.
Gotcha. But if we just call out that the entire parcel will be used for outside storage, the same profiles would be considered, correct?
Well, I would have to have, again, the fire department would have to review that and ensure that they're okay with that. Not only that, it would, we would have to review it for the screening.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing, and maybe this will help, is we don't want hodgepodge, put your outdoor storage wherever you want.
Right.
It needs to be planned and arranged in a way where everybody knows what goes where. So if there is a problem, they can access it without trying to get the fire truck in because the equipment's all over the place. Sounds to me like you plan on using it. The other option was to barricade that off until, right, until it's used at a future date. I mean, it's your, it sounds to me like you're planning on using it now, so you probably need to identify what's going to go where, or at least what the plan is, how it's all going to be situated on this piece of property. Because right now, it could be anywhere.
We're just planning on proposing that it's accessible to the tenants, because I think that's a big benefit to anybody that wants to rent these spaces.
Right, and we're not denying that, but I think it needs to be planned out so where it's not just put your stuff in the back wherever you find a spot that's open.
Right.
I don't think that's what we're looking for.
I guess we just need some guidance on what kind of planning, more than, I could just put like a square that says, hey--
By tenant basis?
Yeah, it's, I mean--
By tenant's basis?
It's going to depend on who rents it. If a t-shirt place rents part of my building, they won't need outside storage.
Correct.
If a landscaper rents it, he'll need some storage. I get you want to know what's going there and where, but I won't know until somebody rents it.
Fair point. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. What about, you said we could just, right now, apply for the first portion where we have the four buildings and don't have access to the northern piece of property, and allow you to then develop the property. But if the tenants move, want to identify who the tenants are going to be, then you might know what your needs are, and then you come back with the plan for that parcel.
I would just hate to tell a tenant, yes, we have outside storage. Come back and you guys say, no, we don't like that storage. I just feel like it's tamping me on who I can rent to.
I don't think that's going to be the case, as long as you, you know, you know what the purpose is. The screening shouldn't be a problem. We can count on you--
The screening's no problem.
Right.
I think we had talked about building a berm. There was less of an issue because it's a back parcel. It's landlocked. It's not on the road. That's what we had talked about with planning.
Yeah.
I don't care about planting some trees, fencing.
You're going to phase this in. It would seem to me like you have plenty of time to figure out who's going to go on which building one, which building two, what outdoor storage they're going to need. Then you can come back to the Planning Department and figure out Turner's landscaping is going to have certain, they need to put their equipment in this area. This is how it's going to be arranged. We're just looking to make sure it's organized. It's an organized mess, not a disorganized mess. So it's more of a planned use of the space. If I heard you right, right, Julie?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, that's all we're saying.
Yeah.
And I think if you're going to phase it in, it's going to take a while, and then if the first building comes in, it's landscaping, and they need, we have outdoor storage, then you just come back and let us know how you would arrange it. That's all.
I guess my understanding is that we'll still be allowed to have outside storage based on tenants.
I don't, I don't think we're denying you can have the outdoor storage. I think it's just a matter of how it's going to be arranged on that spot.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I didn't want to build buildings and then later be told, no, I can't have outside storage because that limits my tenants to probably--
I don't believe we're saying that, so--
No, we're not saying that. Accessory outdoor storage is permitted in the light manufacturing district as long as you meet the requirements in that section of the ordinance. And so we just want to ensure that you're able to meet those requirements.
I don't think that'd be a problem.
Okay. Y'all set? Anybody else have any? Julie, are you have anything more?
Uh, no, that's--
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? You have anything else to add? All right. Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casali.
Yeah. Before I make the motion, then I need to clarify how we're going to award it so that we segregate the two parcels so they can proceed with the southernmost parcel. Is that what we're agreeing to do? Do you have a suggestion on how I can separate the motion to include--
The planned outdoor storage?
Yeah.
Julie, any ideas on that?
So, yes, I mean, I would approve the buildings, the multi-tenant industrial buildings on the property, and then actually maybe somehow barricade the parcel to the north so, you know, use of that parcel can be accomplished once a site plan has been approved for accessory outdoor storage. Okay.
Just for clarification from me, would it come back to you or would that have to come back to the commission for review of that as well, right?
Yes, it would have to come back to the Planning Commission as well.
How it's going to be laid out?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. I move to approve Site Plan Application Number 25-23, Jeff Bediant, PJ Industrial LLC, 47861 Ryan Road, parcel number 230730426006, and vacant parcel number 230730200011, located south of Hamlin Road on the west side of Ryan Road. Four multi-tenant industrial buildings with the northern portion barricaded until further for future use, depending on the site plan brought back to the Planning Commission.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Casali, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set. Thank you. Next item is Site Plan 25-32, Joseph Lochurko, Lochurko Investments LLC, 50435 Van Dyke Avenue, located south of 23 Mile Road on the west side of Van Dyke. Four multi-tenant industrial buildings. Come on down. Name and address, please, and make sure you sign in after.
My name is Jim Eppink. I'm with Jay Eppink Partners Land Planning Firm in Auburn Hills, Michigan. It's good to see everybody tonight. I'm here tonight representing Joe Lochurko and his team who are with us tonight. We also have Brett Burkholz from Noack Faust Engineers. So our team is here to walk through our proposal. We also are looking at LM, a piece of property right on Van Dyke, just south of 23 Mile Road on the west side of the road. It's a small parcel, about 3.8 acres, that's located just south of the collision shop that's there, immediately north of the industrial, or the mini-storage, and it backs up to Ford Central Park. So it's been there for, unused really forever. It's kind of tucked right in there, not very wide, but it's one of the remaining LM properties on Van Dyke. In terms of its size, again, it's 3.86 acres. We're proposing similarly four industrial multi-tenant buildings. The buildings will be 12,000 square foot each, five units per building at about 2,400 square feet per unit. It's envisioned that, you know, as you had mentioned, Mr. Turner, a landscaper, a plumber, an irrigation contractor, someone who generally probably has a panel truck, maybe has a small interior office, maybe an electrician, those type of things. We're not proposing outdoor storage at this time. We're really trying to target tenants that enjoy the ability to have a small, flexible office up front. It has a roll-up door in the front, also a roll-up door in the back so people can drive their trucks, you know, their panel trucks, right through it, store them inside at night, whatever that case might be. In terms of setbacks, we far exceed all the setbacks. The side setbacks in this area, given our neighbors are only about five foot, we're about almost 40 foot on one side and almost 60 foot on the other. In the back, our setback could be as shallow as 20 feet. We're at about 160 feet from the back. We do put our detention in the back. The front, we are right at the setback line that's measured from the center line, which is 85 foot, and we're at 85 foot in developing the sidewalk there along Van Dyke as well. We meet the landscape standards in terms of trees, frontage trees. We are removing an awful lot of trees from there. We've calculated and provided the replacement calculations. I think we've got about 16 trees that we're putting in. We're putting those in the back. LM, ironically, doesn't have any parking lot landscaping requirements. That kind of goes against my soul, so Joe let me put a couple landscape trees in. So we do have parking lot landscape trees. We've got the frontage landscape, and then the rear around the detention. The buildings, really, I think are very, very good-looking. I tried to blow up one there. What we tried to do is make each individual unit look like a distinctive shop. So it has a good brick architecture. It has a standing metal seam roof lighting into the building, and then it has the roll-up door on the side. So each of these will look like its own individual business as opposed to just a warehouse. Their masonry on all sides, the front of the buildings are brick, the side and the back are decorative block. With that, we're here to answer any questions. We'll have one small monument sign out at the front, meeting, of course, the signed standards for Shelby Township. We're not asking for any deviations. This isn't a planned unit development. It's just a straight zoning project, so we're happy to be here and look forward to developing these. One last thing, just picking up off the last applicant. We are proposing to do this in phases, so we build the first two buildings first. Obviously, the detention would have to go in right away in the parking lot, and then we'd build the second two buildings after that.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Nick, this was your review. Why don't you go ahead and let us know what you think?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Turner. Thank you, Mr. Eppink, for giving an excellent review of the project and a summary of what is proposed at this site. This project did go through a preliminary review where a lot of the outstanding comments were addressed before we came to you with a relatively clean site plan that's, you know, by right in that light manufacturing zoning district. It is zoned light manufacturing, as Mr. Eppink said, which is not quite consistent with the master plan designation of a consumer commercial corridor. However, this plan is fairly well in line with that master plan designation. No outdoor storage, combination of light uses on a single property, and then, you know, a high standard of architectural design. Speaking of the architectural design, that is my really only outstanding comment for the site plan. That wasn't addressed in the original review of the property. For the most easterly building, Building A on the site plan, the brick can be returned to a certain limit. The brick on the east facade can be returned a certain amount on the southern elevation of Building A. And the Planning Department does recommend extending that architectural feature the extent of Building A, primarily because it'll be setback, you know, 85 feet from the center line of the road, which will be in front of the building to the south. Now, it is up to the Planning Commission if you'd like to see that returned the entire length or a reduced length or, you know, not at all. So I would leave that up to the Planning Commission to make that final decision. But overall, I will say that this project is a no-good project for an infill development of the property that has yet to be developed along the Van Dyke corridor there south of 23 Mile. And since you did say the phasing of the project, I'd recommend or require that the phase line is drawn on the plan when you submit it for final site plan approval. And that's all I have, Mr. Turner.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the commission? Because the first thing you have to think about is how do you want the rate, how do you want that return on the south side? Are you suggesting, Nick, that that go the whole length to cover all those five bay doors on that side?
Yes, for Building A.
Okay, for Building A only. So I guess I'll ask the commission what their thoughts are on that. Anybody?
Chairman Turner?
Commissioner Larray?
I would agree. I would like to, that banding you have of the soldier course along the west and east elevation as well as the north, would you be opposed to carry that through the south elevation?
No, no, we can accommodate that. Yep. We can, we'll work if it pleases. We can either do it all brick or that banding. I think Joe and his architect will want to look at it, but we'll agree to enhance the south side of that Building A to either meet the sides or frankly, meet the north side of it, one way or the other.
I think if you can, the three banding that you have, starting at the ground up, and then you have the smaller courses, the soldier course, if you carry that through on the south elevation, it would look quite nice.
Okay. Great, yeah, we'll work together on that.
Anyone else have any thoughts?
Mr. Chair, just one question I have--
Commissioner Baker, go ahead, yep.
We own a building very similar to this. It just doesn't seem like, and it's a construction business, so there just doesn't seem like, is it a complete pull-through on the garage doors? It doesn't seem like there's a lot of, there's enough turning radius, I guess, to get trucks with what you're proposing for tenants, or does it seem like there's enough room there to allow for that?
It's a good question, and we did specifically plan for that. Now, we certainly don't expect to pull a, you know, a tractor trailer through there. This is more like the size of an Amazon truck or a plumbing truck type thing. We do have circulation to pull straight through from one side to the back, so we've got a garage door on both sides. We pulled it from the south side as far as we possibly could to accommodate that turning, and then we provided turning movements for our buildings as well as for the fire department. So we're confident that it'll work for that.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. So you're all, you're good with modifying the southern aspect, the southern portion of Building A only for that south side, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Larray? Make a motion to approve Site Plan Number 2532 with Joseph Lochurko, Lochurko Investments LLC, 50435 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 230721276001, located south of 23 Mile Road on the west side of Van Dyke Avenue, four multi-tenant industrial building. Approval subject to the submission of revised plans addressing all department, planning, commission, and site plan review comments. In addition to review, in addition to the review comments of the Township staff, the Planning Commission requests that the exterior finish of Building A east elevation return on the entire south elevation of Building A to provide a continuous appearance from the adjacent right-of-way.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Larray, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Larray.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Yep. Finally, tonight, our last site plan, Number 25-35, Steve Brewer, Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, 48945 Hayes Road, located on the southwest corner of 22 Mile Road in Hayes. Modifications to an existing credit union. Welcome. Name and address.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Mike Blannick. I'm with the firm Stuckey Vitale Architects, 27172 Woodward Avenue in Royal Oak. Also have, from MSGCU, Matt Dishman, who's their Director of Facilities, in case we have any questions on the branch itself. So what we're proposing this evening, if you're familiar with that 22 Mile in Hayes branch location, it's a small, about 2,000, just over 2,000 square foot branch. What they like to do is expand the branch and remodel the branch interior and exteriorly. If you're familiar with like the 23 Mile Road branch that we did, I think, back like 2015, 16, we renovated that one. If you're, also the other one at 26 Mile, Van Dyke, that's a small branch, we renovated that one. So what we're proposing here is to do a similar renovation. It's going to be a new facade on the 22 Mile Road frontage. It'll be brick, cast stone, new windows, and then metal roof. And then as we turn the corner going east on Hayes there, we'll wrap it around the new facade, and then we're going to add in addition about 1,600 square feet to the branch, update all the mechanical systems and that. This is an older branch, so it needs a, needs a refresh. So our proposal is to, as you can see, is basically keep the addition and everything on the current site, you know, without going beyond that parameter from the review by planning. We're good with everything. There was one item that we wanted to bring up, and I actually spoke to Julie earlier today. There is a current easement that's in place for this property with the property owner to the mall there beyond, and from the attorney review with the credit union's attorney, we feel we have the right to do what we're proposing, and we don't need to do that easement. I sent that paperwork to Julie, and they're going to check with your city attorney to make sure they're in agreement, and just have two attorneys talk about it, but we flushed this out, and we feel we don't need to rewrite the easement. That's--
I reviewed the easement's fine. It's a full access ingress and egress, no limitations on how many or locations.
Correct. So we didn't want to have to back and rework it because it already filed, and it's, we kind of checked that out ahead of time, so we were all good with what we're proposing.
Okay, good.
So that's great. And we meet the requirements for the stacking, you know, there's spaces required. I mean, really, as you know, a lot of people do online banking, the dues don't get as full, except when it was COVID, that was used heavily, but, you know, that was like a once-in-a-lifetime kind of an event. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
Thank you, Chairman. So this site plan did not undergo a preliminary review. Thank you, Chairman. So this site plan did not undergo a preliminary review. However, the site plans were very complete. I just have a couple of comments. Five trees are required along 22 Mile instead of the four, so we're just asking for an additional tree along 22 Mile. The building dimensions will need to be included on the architectural plans. And then we vetted out the... We got the information on the cross-access agreement. So those are the only comments that we have. And like I said, we've worked with Mr. Blannick before. Excellent project and very competent firms. I don't anticipate any issues with him moving forward with this project.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Larray?
Do you have any issue with putting an additional tree?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Picaselli.
I move to approve Site Plan Number 25-345, Steve Brewer, Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, 48945 Hayes Road, Parcel Number 230725200015, located at the southwest corner of 22 Mile Road in Hayes, proposing in addition to the existing building, including site improvements.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Casali, supported by Commissioner Larray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Nobody else in the audience? So Planning Directors report. Julie?
Chairman, I really don't have anything other than just to notify you and let you know that the December 22nd meeting will be canceled. Our next scheduled meeting is for January 12th, and I just wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you. Having said that, since this is the last meeting of 2025, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded, moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.